Well, can we get the motion on the floor and then we'll ask the question?
I'll make that motion.
There is a motion. There is a second. Now we can have the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under item five, I didn't say that I would like elected officials to request information to be put into the packet. I indicated that I'd like elected officials to have the option of putting information into the packet. That's germane to the agenda. It kind of says that I asked that they do that, and I just asked that they have the option to do that.
I will get that revised.
So we have an amendment to the revised revision to the minutes. Any further comments or questions with regard to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, send motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is agreed to, and the minutes thus are accepted. Moving then on to the discussion, possible action on the revised Rule Six, introduction of business, which you see in your packet. This is sort of a, I think we're complete with...
Rule five is first. Rule five is first on the agenda.
I'm sorry. I stand corrected. A discussion and possible action on revised Rule Five, order of business of the common council, which you have in your packet. So are there any? I think we're ready to move on with that. And move this on to the committee of the whole.
So if I can add, Chair, changes that we made from your May 6 meeting, we added in a reading of the City of Wausau Public Comments Statement. So we would have that statement. We wouldn't put that in the specific ordinance, but we would have that available to be read before the council meetings. And then we specifically mentioned memorials and proclamations because there was lots of discussion about specificity of agenda items. So we put all of those items that potentially could be on a council agenda in the order of business. And then we just moved proclamations. We're typically, at our council meetings, proclamations is at the beginning with roll call, pledge, proclamations. And we moved that down to with the communications and recommendations of the mayor because that would all be coming from the mayor or that office. And then we added in specifically, or then the rest is the same from the draft in May for Rule Five.
And it's also consistent. You'll see if you read on into Rule Six, which is the next agenda item, which also mentions ordinances and resolutions, presentations, proclamations, and memorials. So that's why we use the same five terms consistently throughout Rule Five and Rule Six.
Question. Question, Mr. Martin?
I got a question. We've struck reports of city officers, and I'm wondering, when we get a report of like insurance claims, does that fall under committee reports because that's from the Board of Public Works? Or does that come under another heading?
Go ahead, Caitlin.
Typically, you put that under committee reports at the top of the agenda.
Okay. Okay. So things like that would be covered.
And it's just placed on file. We've never traditionally reported on it.
No.
And it's not from an officer. It's from a board.
Okay.
So we just place those on file pursuant to another ordinance, actually, that's not in your rules, under the Claims Chapter and Chapter Three that requires us to file, place on file, I think it says, with the clerk every quarter or monthly.
They show up on the agenda, and they're in our packet.
Right. Right. Good question.
Any other questions with regard to Rule Five? Because then we'll be able to move this on to whenever the committee of the whole, the process would be committee of the whole, and then the city council. So whenever we're finished, but at least we can pass this rule, and then we'll move that on to the committee of the whole when that committee is called. So in order for us to do that, I think we would have a motion to, at this point in time, pass on the revisions to Rule Five. There is a motion by Killian. Is there a second? There is a second by Martins. Any comments or questions with regard to the proposed Rule Five? Hearing none. All in favor, send motion. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that stands. Thank you very much. I think we've come a long way with regard to that. I think there were some needed changes, and I think that stands a little bit firm ground. Thank you. Discussion, possible action, revised Rule Six, introduction of business, which is also in your packet. Introduction requirements, filing. Any questions? Questions? Yes. Terry Killian?
I have a question. It says the packet will not be redistributed due to updates after close of business day on the preceding business week. Are we still going to stick to the seven- and six-day rule? I mean, this kind of says we don't have to. I know I got the HR committee agenda and packet today, seven days ahead, and I was thrilled. I mean, if you're gone, if you work a full-time job and you're gone for the weekend for whatever reason, and the packet isn't completed into the agenda until the end of the day on Friday, and there's a meeting on Monday, and you have to go to work on Monday, when are you supposed to review it? Because I still think we need the seven- and six-day rule, but there has to be a stop that says no more can be added to the packet after a certain time. And, you know, it seems like, and I think I got this information from Alder Martins. He told me at one point in time that they were adding packet information as emergency kinds of things, but everything got to be an emergency. So they were adding information at the last minute all the time. So it feels to me as though we still need to have emphasis on the seven- and six-day rule and a stop time when it can't be added anymore. That seems like the only realistic way that people actually have an opportunity to review the packet information.
Would there be a revision or the last day, you know, right, this would be the end of business on Friday?
Is that for the whole packet? Or, that's what I'm asking. Is this for, are we ignoring the six-day rule, or is this just for...
That would be for the agenda. I think the packet would be, this is separate from the agenda.
Right. But I think our attorney told us that there's a date, a number of days prior to the meeting, that information for the packet has to be submitted. Is that correct?
Yes, Alder Killian. It's the sentence right before the one that we added that's highlighted. And you're right. I think it does maybe create a little bit of confusion because it does say that the packets, again, not the agenda, you're correct, it's the packet material, which we are not required to provide. So there's no, I mean, we may say it's an emergency, but when you say emergency, I'm thinking about the two-hour, you know, with good cause, updates to changing the agenda, which requires a 24-hour notice. So we're not talking about the agenda. But we do frequently get the agendas out later than seven days. We frequently keep updating packets up until a couple hours perhaps before meetings. And I guess, I mean, the new software, Caitlin can speak to that, that we get may just not accept anything from anybody who submits something late anymore. Or we're just going to have to get more strict at council meetings and just say, I want this off the agenda. We're not going to consider it. It wasn't brought to us timely. I don't know how, you will have to hold us all and ourselves accountable for that and stick to the rule. But that is the rule. Seven days for an agenda. Six days, the packets must be prepared and available for distribution. How you deal with things that need to be added, or let's say it's all or nothing then. It's six days ahead. You're going to get what you get. And let's say I'm waiting for an offer, like we had at ED recently, where you're going to waive your right of first refusal. Well, you don't know that unless you know what the offer is, right?
Right.
Not that you're going to buy it, but you need that information. We're frequently waiting for, you know, an attorney or developer, somebody, or realtor to reach out to us and provide that information. We don't always have control over it. So we can make it a hard stop. If we don't have that information that we need to update to the packet after the six days, you know, when it's originally distributed, then you won't be able to consider it at the next council meeting. But that's an area that I see frequently happens in our office, at least.
I don't have any objection to information being added up until like Friday night. But it feels like when it's added after that, it makes it almost impossible for any people to even know what's in the packet. I mean, if they're out of town on a family emergency or they're on vacation, and they're not available, it feels like there has to be some type of deadline so that they have the opportunity to review the information before the meeting. And I guess I would like to hear what other members feel is reasonable.
Can I add? So this highlighted clause was our attempt to address that hard stop. I think last time there was a mention of 48 hours or 24 hours before the meeting. And so this would be really, this would give our office time to get that packet updated by 4:30 PM on Friday before to then, like, so you guys know, and we're all on the same page, that there are going to be no more updates to the packet. So it does make, you know, so essentially it allows staff two more days if there's a major change or, like, oh, we got this information. It's really helpful to the agenda item. We could add that. But after, you know, Friday at 4:30, we're not making any more updates.
So we could add the language, in no case will the packet be updated or redistributed, or in no case will, you know, it's still the six-day rule, but in no case will packet materials be accepted after, you know, close of business on the last day of the preceding business week. And then that would affect any Monday night meetings, Tuesday night meetings, probably Thursday, because that's still six days ahead of even a meeting that could occur on Thursday.
Yeah.
And then we just make that a hard stop. I mean, either the item's ready or it's not. I totally understand that tension for the members because it doesn't give you any time. You get 300-page packets, and you're trying to read everything and absorb it.
Alder Tierney?
And I would like that as well. There are those minute times, like you said, you're waiting for an attorney or something like that, that I could see. But the problem is then all of a sudden, this gets added, and this gets added, and this gets added. And, well, you know, Ann was able to add that, so I can add this. And that's where it becomes out of control then. And, you know, that's what this is all about, is everybody thinks everything is emergency, and it's not necessarily so.
Well, that's why the wording on the end of business day on Friday, that said, of course, there may be other things coming, but that alerts the staff, the city staff, to the clerk's office that this is what, this is the deadline that we are, and we're trying to, you know, make sure that things don't just come, that there is that hard stop, I think, what you referred to many times.
Right. Because, you know, people need time to be able to read it, to ingest it, to see if they have questions, see if they want to look into something a little bit more. And, you know, it's hard to do if you get the packet, you know, maybe five days, and then a day before, somebody's adding stuff and taking stuff away. And like myself, who's working full-time, I may not see that until my lunch hour at work or afterwards because I can't peruse the website throughout the day when I'm working. So it does make it very difficult for people that are still working a full-time job to catch up with that. So I agree with the hard stop. I do.
Not only the council members, but as you point out, it's citizens that are interested in a topic that then don't have time to catch up. And I remember getting complaints, you know, from local media, too, saying, oh, well, I happened to look back, and I saw more stuff uploaded after the original packet came out. And then the day before the meeting, I didn't check again, and I went to cover the meeting, and there was even more updated, like 24 hours before the meeting. How do you keep doing that? And how do I know I have to keep checking back every day? So this way, if there were a hard stop, we just didn't accept it or overrule the, you know, suspend the rule at the meeting, then everyone would know because it's in our rules that nothing, they can expect not to have to look back after 4:30 Friday for meetings the next week because nothing's going to be there.
So is the wording correct then, or are we... The wording, the packet will not be redistributed due to the updates after the close of business on the last day of the preceding business week. So on Friday, that's the hard stop. And that is with regard to Rule Six. Any other comments or questions with regard to Rule Six?
I might want to clarify that a little bit because I think it can also be interpreted to mean that the packet's not going to be redistributed, but we may still accept updates after the close of business. So I'd like to make that more clear, but I think I understand the intent that in no case will any updates be added to the packet materials, which have already been distributed after the close of business of the Friday. Does that make sense?
So no further comments or questions with regard to Rule Six? I think we're ready to take action on Rule Six and forward this to the committee of the whole. There would be, a motion would be necessary to forward this. There is a motion by Alder Killian. Is there a second? There is a second by Alder Tierney. Any comments or questions with regard to the motion? All in favor, send motion. Say aye. Opposed. Motion is agreed to, and we'll forward Rule Six on to the committee of the whole as appropriate. The next item on the agenda is the discussion, mostly discussion, I believe, this evening with regard to possible action on meeting room decorum, creating a statement to be stated during meetings and/or placed on the agenda. And with that, I think we come back in your packet to the City of Wausau Statement of, City of Wausau Statement Proposal. City of Wausau recognizes the value of public comment. Are we, any comments or questions with regard to that? This would be the statement stated during meetings and/or placed on agendas. Yes, Alder Killian?
Just reading through that, where it says, public may not identify specific personnel by name. I know that there have been multiple court issues, I believe, where that's been questioned. And it feels to me as though if someone comes to the podium and they have something, as long as they're addressing the chair, as long as they're maintaining civility and not being disrespectful, it feels as though a resident or any citizen would have the opportunity to address something with a specific person. I know if they came to the podium and said, I really don't like Terry Killian as my alderperson. She's doing a rotten job, and I wish she would do something different. Of course, I would be uncomfortable, and I would feel bad. But I would respect their rights to tell me that. I think, as you look around the country, I think one of the things about our democracy is that we protect the freedom of speech. And we wouldn't have to do that if everybody said nice things. I mean, if everybody just said, oh, that's, you're doing a great job, why would they need protection? But I think our rights are being protected because we need to have the opportunity to address those things honestly and openly. And I just feel that that shouldn't be in there, or it should be identified differently.
One would be to identify that as city staff personnel as opposed to city council. It's just a specific personnel. You could refer to, you could add in the wording that, you know, city staff as a...
Well, I think, aren't they just saying that they don't want anybody to come up to the podium and criticize anybody personally?
Right.
So why does that need to be in there? As long as we have in our decorum statements that the chairperson has the right to maintain civility in our meetings, I mean, I'm not sure why that needs to be in there at all.
So the sentence with regard to public comments may not identify specific personnel by name. That's your question in that sentence?
Right.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question? So Caitlin, I think you prepared this, so the Wausau School District statement. It looks like there's a similar sentence in there, but what does it mean at the end of that sentence or through the use through spec?
It was like specific, you know, like attributes or, you know...
So there's more to that sentence?
Yes.
Okay.
And like, you know, so don't utilize, you know, I think their big thing is children, you know, don't identify specific children, you know, whether it's using their name or generalities where you know who they're talking about.
Oh, so don't identify them by name or through the use of specific attributes that would identify them in another way other than by their name. Okay. Thank you.
So we are a different, slightly different space than the school district, so maybe that sentence doesn't apply the same.
Further comments with regard to that sentence? Because we can easily take that sentence out of that. Yes?
I got a question. And maybe this is something the attorney can tell us because, you know, we use Robert's Rules of Orders to run our meetings, but Robert's Rule of Orders doesn't, is poorly, you know, it fits poorly with municipal meetings. And is there anything in the rules that specify, you know, like the specific naming of individuals when you're making a public comment or a statement?
It's a very good question, and I didn't bring it down here with me tonight. I had to run up and grab something off the printer, and you caught me. Mike, I did not bring my Robert's Rules down. I'm not sure that it does. As much as I've read through there and talked about that, I think it goes more to your comment about, not that you can't make comments, but that you do it in a civil, respectful manner. You can still have an opinion, and it can be conveyed in a completely different manner.
So the rules, the rules don't really say anything about personal identification?
I don't think so. I could be wrong, but I don't recall that it does, other than direct your comments to the chair. I'm not sure that it prohibits that, but I'm going to look that up.
Okay.
So we'll strike, hearing no for the comments, we'll strike that, and then we'll bring that back. Or are we comfortable? Did you want a little bit more research on that, Mr. Martin, so that we can bring this back then? Because we can do further research with regard to exactly how Robert, you know, what other parliamentary procedure would be with regard to identifying people.
Maybe a little bit more research is necessary. I feel uncomfortable with just striking it wholesale. I'm concerned that, you know, it's, when people come up to the podium to give public comment, they're addressing the chair and the body, but then they, but then they start to eviscerate a certain city employee. And I don't, I don't think that's necessary in the public, you know, when we're doing public comment. They need, you know, I guess that's what my concern is. So I...
So we'll bring that, we'll do further research on that, and we'll bring that back at our next meeting then? Is that fine? Okay. So 5B, restricting signage during city council, board committee, or commission meetings. I thought that we had pretty much, how do I want to say that, really not spoken to the issue of signage, because I think that that was really a legal issue still within, and there's so many different, there's so many different approaches and so many different legal approaches to signage, the size of signage, the kinds of signage. I thought that we were pretty much going to be leaving signage off of the, off of any of the rules. But I may be mistaken on that. I just want to reaffirm that with the committee.
So what you're saying, just to clarify, is that signage will be allowed as long as it's not disruptive or dangerous?
And pretty much up to the, up to the chair.
Yeah.
We decided, I thought, you know, that we would not try to write some kind of a rule with regard to that because of the variety of legal issues out there.
And Mr. Chair, I'll add that I did do an exhaustive search, and you'll see in the packet, the only one I found was Ozaki County. And in their long rules that look much like our, you know, Chapter 2.16 rules, they kind of put it all together. The rules of decorum, followed by the county board members, apply to non-members in attendance at county board meetings. The use of signs is prohibited, just generally. Applause or heckling in response to a speaker's remarks and other conduct that disrupts the meetings or is disrespectful of others is prohibited. So I only found, didn't find any cities. I only found one county that actually prohibited the use of signage during a meeting.
In Wisconsin.
In Wisconsin, yes. I did not look outside of the state. But I think you're correct. That was my understanding after the last meeting, was that you didn't really want to go down that path.
So is that correct, then? We'll take that off of the agendas from now on with regard to the signs. Agreed. Okay. Then moving on to creating a decorum section in the standing rules of the common council. Again, this is, we'll have further discussion. And do you want to speak a little bit to the...
The handout in the packet?
Right.
So we found that. Again, my searching, and you can see the website at the bottom, practicalrobertsrules.com. Even despite the fact that last time Gary had found, you know, a set of decorum rules from another state, they, in all honesty, would look very similar in our state, regardless of what municipality they were associated. But really, the state statutes are very broad in allowing you to enact your own rules of governance in any way that you want. And to the extent that you don't address a certain topic, then, as Alder Martins pointed out, Robert's Rules controls. And it's hard sometimes to make it applicable. That's true, because private societies don't have employees. So that's why I'm thinking I'm not going to find that other comment. But in any event, this is a brief summary, and if we look through some of the things in here, there are things we already have in our, in our rules. But if we don't, they're going to default to Robert's Rules. I checked, I went on... I checked, I went on MuniCode, our law, or our library for ordinances, and I checked Green Bay, Janesville, Kenosha, Cronin Wetter, La Crosse, Lincoln County, Madison, Marathon County, Merrill, Nina, and the City of Wausau's ordinances were all identical when it came to duties of the presiding officer of the council or a committee. Shall call the meeting to order at the appointed time and shall preserve order and decorum. That's the only time it's mentioned. Decide all questions of order and conduct the proceedings of the meeting in accordance with the parliamentary rules unless otherwise provided by statute, statute or these rules. Any member may appeal from a decision of the presiding officer, you all know that. The appeal may be sustained by a majority of the members present excluding the presiding officer. So, we are very consistent with numerous other municipalities our size in terms of what we actually have in our ordinance. But again, it, it's pretty wide open. You can add, I've seen when I've done this in the distant past, rules about you, you have to attend so many council meetings and if you don't, the council can fine you, forfeiture. I've seen all kinds of, of things. So, it's really up to your discretion and your imagination as to what you want to see in ordinance and what you'd prefer to leave alone and just default to Robert's Rules. But what we have now is pretty, pretty consistent.
Yes?
So, as far as decorum, it sounds like it's essentially up to the chair then, is that correct? I mean, that makes sense. I mean, I think if we start putting too many restrictions on behaviors and issues that are viewpoints and are points of view or we're going to, I mean, there has to be an arbiter for all of those things. And, and it feels as though if we have elected a chair of a committee, they probably have the ability to understand what's civil and not disruptive. And I would think that those things should be left up to our chair.
That's absolutely correct. I also found, I didn't want to bore you with it, but there's a Wisconsin counties PowerPoint called Rules of Decorum that they use to train county boards and the duties of the chair. You obey the presiding officer at the council or the committees. You use, you, and they enforce the rules relating to debate, order, and decorum. Remind the members to confine their remarks to the merits of the question and so on. So, yes, those are all rules with which are already familiar and which are left to the discretion of the chair. So, unless you can think of a specific topic or something that you think has created a problem that you think needs addressing, maybe we're trying to fix something that doesn't need fixing or isn't broken, I don't know. But it, it's very broad and open-ended in terms of what you can legislate because you're holding yourselves accountable to those rules.
I think the, the issues of decorum have come up a variety of times and I thought we should at least start to talk about it and resolve it at this place and then we can report that back to the committee as a whole. Yes, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, instead of changing our ordinance on decorum, would something like a, a sheet like, like this, like this decorum summary, would that be appropriate to have copies available in the, in the chambers for people to refer to? I see it more as an educational piece at this point in time than to...
Absolutely. That's another really great question. And sometimes I see that in the form of policy. I don't remember if that was the city of Madison, but rather than enacting it into your ordinance, they'll put out a sheet like this, hand it out freely, like you said, to educate people, citizens and council members alike, and even adopt as your policy and label it. It's all taken from Robert's Rules anyway, which you adopt, so there would be no harm in that.
Because I, I think, I think, you know, just education pieces and, and, and policy statements would go a long way in addressing some of these decorum issues, especially if the, if, if the issues are stemming from citizens, you know, that don't quite great understand, you know, how, how a meeting is run, so it's...
It's a very good point, just like behavior in court. They have rules of decorum and if you don't practice in a court, you wouldn't know, you know, what's expected and you might inadvertently violate something right. So, good point.
Any further comments? Is it a sense, is it a sense of the committee then we will drop that as a topic of further discussion? Am I understanding that right?
I guess if we were to take this up as a policy statement, would this something that, would we take that to the committee of the whole or is this, that something that just staff can...
Maybe that's an, maybe that's an education opportunity at that time with regard to what we found with regard to, we can determine that kind of an agenda item at that time, but I think that that may become an agenda item at the committee of the whole, but not necessarily enforced by the, by the ordinance. That's how I would sense that.
Not as an actionable item?
Right, right, right. Not as an actionable item, but as discussion and sort of a present, a discussion with regard to the city council.
Or not even an action item to adopt it as a policy, if that was what you were getting at, but just start making copies of this and handing it out with the agendas in the back of the room or having it available for education as an education piece, because it's consistent with Robert's Rules, which you adopt already. So, I don't know that we need to adopt this as a separate policy. I think you, we could just start making this available. Staff could do that.
I'm okay with that.
Then moving on to the discussion on materials needed for appointments and reappointments to boards, committees, and commissions. We had a variety of discussions with regard to that, specifically things that we would want in addition to the online form with regard to resumes or other information that we would want with regard to appointments and reappointments to boards, commissions, a variety of committees. Any, you have the online form in your packet. Are there other, we can have a general discussion with regard to that, what our thinking would be on that? Because at, at some time, at, I think at the last meeting, we did say that we wanted more, we wanted more than just the online form in front of us, perhaps a resume. I mean, we can put that, we can find, you know, with regard to appointments as part of the online. Go ahead.
I would say, one thing that came up in our kind of staff prep meeting for this is that there are certain committees that have specific membership requirements. I'm not sure which one it is, but you need to be a citizen architect to be in that position or you need to be a, you know, a downtown business owner to serve on the Business Improvement District. And so, there are those certain criteria which we could add to this application form. So, that way, when I talked with our IT application analyst, she said the easiest would be to put that list of all the potential requirements on those committees and then you could check which ones you would fulfill. So, if you are a citizen architect, you could select that you have that criteria or, you know, if, if you wanted it, you could upload proof that you do have that title or that certification. So, that's one option we could make to improve this application.
Yes, Alder Killian?
I have one question. I know, and I don't think this is supposed to be a part of the rule, but I'm wondering, would it just be agendized? I remember at our meetings, what a difference it made to have appointees come up and talk about themselves. I mean, that changed, I remember one of the votes was, "No, we don't want that person." And when he was given the opportunity to come up and address the council, they really liked him and, and pushed that forward. So, is that something that could, would just be agendized, that our appointees have the opportunity to come and address us and talk about themselves? Is that something that would be done individually or is that something we would like to see happen? I don't know. That would just be at the discretion of the person making the appointment, saying, "Is that what would happen?"
Go ahead, well, I was, but go ahead.
Go ahead, Chair.
Well, no, I think that would be most likely at the discretion of the mayor, but as an invitation to this person to come and speak, you know, at that city council meeting, but that's, that's, I think that's a mayor's call. I think it would be hard, in my view, to write that...
I didn't think that would be a part of a rule, but I was just wondering how that could be, how that should be handled, because that was so, it left such a positive impact on me when the appointments were made.
We could simply communicate to the mayor or in a case where someone else is making an appointment, that we'd like them to make sure to remember to invite that appointee to the meeting at which their appointment would be considered. I, you know, we can't require it, obviously, but we can certainly invite them. And to the extent they're willing to come, I agree with you, I think it's great.
On the citizen participation form, could there be perhaps a line that says, "Would you like to come in and talk to blah, blah, blah?" And they could answer yes or no. And then based upon that answer, they could be followed up with the, say, "Well, this is the next meeting."
The mayor, the, that would be the mayor's call depending on what, how that was answered. And maybe the application with regard to an engineer, is that, is that question asked on the application form with regard to what special qualifications you would have? Engineer, architect?
Currently, it's not, but it could be added, yes.
It's not, but I, I think that that, Mike?
Yeah, I guess two points. One is on, on the city's website where it lists all of these boards, committees, and commissions, there's a description of each commission there. Wouldn't that be an appropriate place to list qualifications of, of members?
I think most of them do. It's, I want to say it's Board of Zoning Appeals is the one...
Or like Room Tax. Room Tax requires hotel operators.
Room Tax requires somebody, you know, somebody that's in the hotel industry and then a citizen member and then a...
Right.
Oh, up, further up, yeah, here. Of the membership, one shall be an architect or architectural designer, one shall be historian, one shall be alderperson, and six shall be citizen members. So, then we, in our record of the appointments, we specifically have those positions and then who fills those. And I do believe that there are some committees where that's not specified, like, membership may not be specified? Or do you think it, in your review, they all...
I do believe they all say at least that you have to have this many members or between this number and that number and usually what their terms are for, that they're staggered if they're not required, or, or whether they have to be residents or citizens or alders. I think that's pretty clear with all of the commissions, committees, and boards, but they don't all have professional requirements.
But again, that might just be something that, you know, when, when the mayor looks at these, that's part of the vetting process, you know? Ask if you've got any credentials, licenses, or experience, job, you know, job experience that would fit a particular role within a, within a committee. And I don't, I don't know if that necessarily has to be added to the form. I mean, we don't, I, I like the form to be thorough, but I don't want it to be cumbersome. If, if, and there's that, there's that fine line. And to have that, that, to have, you know, the, the, the free entry fields, you know, where people can add, you know, what qualifications and experience and then adding any kind of files or whatnot, I think probably serves to best, you know, state what their qualifications are. They can, they can submit what's necessary to state their qualifications if they're, if they're, if they wish to apply for, for a certain board or commission.
So, what I'm hearing right now is just a much, a matter of retooling of the applicant, the electronic application itself rather than any, seeking any further documents from them, resumes, letters of reference, is that correct? Just sort of a retooling of the applicant, online application?
Currently, you could, there's like a free file upload box where you could upload, like if someone wanted to put a resume or certification or something, they could, but it's not required.
Yeah, I like, you know, resumes are nice to see, you know, what their, what their experience is and reference, I, I know, references, I don't call references or anything like, but, but I want to see, you know, who the person knows, because sometimes that, that gives you just a better breadth of what their, what their, just, you know, how they, you know, where, how they've, they've been established within the, within the community.
So, we can, on the application itself, we can be a little bit more with regard to resumes and certifications and upload. You know, we can reword that if that's, you know, the direction that we want to proceed so that they, maybe not physically, but at least the attachment to the electronic form.
Are there, so, are there any questions that you think are unnecessary on the current application that you would like removed? I'm not sure if you got a chance to look at it.
Are all of these committees, they're all active committees, like the Dog Park Committee and the, I know the Dog Park has been completed, I don't know if they're still meeting or not, or the...
I believe that one's inactive as well as the Policing Task Force, the Solar Ray Task Force, the Safe Elections Task Force.
Yeah.
I believe those are all inactive.
Okay.
So, how does one, how does these, how do they come off of there?
We have to update the form.
Okay. We have to update the form, okay.
You know, the Attorney's Office, I think a year or two ago, went through and cleaned up the official list. We just have to...
We go through that periodically, because if it's something that's created by ordinance, we do prepare ordinance amendments where you've eliminated committees over the years if they're no longer active. I think liberation and freedom is one that I think we left on the books. Even though it was inactive, we did not repeal the creation of that committee. Am I correct on that?
It's supposed to come back.
Okay, so that's what, you know, so you can always, if they're created by resolution, sometimes we terminate them or by resolution when they're created, much like the task forces, it'll be for a specific study or a specific reason, or say, "In the next 12 months, we want you to study this topic and provide us a report." And then their purpose ends and they provide the report. So, we don't usually go back and, you know, terminate the committee or take any formal action unless it's an amendment. Like I said, then we've repealed the Diversity Affairs Committee, I think maybe even the Legislative Committee. There's, I mean, I've tracked all the changes through the years and it, it's changed quite dramatically, actually, over the years.
So, we'll, for now, we'll retool the application and, and we'll come back to you with that. And then moving then on to discussion, possible future agenda items with regard to a final report on duties of boards, committees, and commissions. Is there any, does that...
So, we don't have that ready for tonight, do we?
No, it's a future agenda.
Yes, but that's, that's a good idea to finally pass that so that we can update the descriptions of all the commissions, committees, and boards in the, on the website. I mean, before, those were not official descriptions, but we, now having changed some of the names of the standing committees, we're going to go through and change their duties to update them. And have the council adopt them officially, so those are the official duties of those committees.
And then that will come in as the rule on process of restagring appointment, sort of a rule with regard to how we do this with regard to, so that... don't, sort of a rule with regard to how we do this, with regard to, so that through time, three members were appointed to five years, I think we need some kind of an understanding exactly how we do restaggering, so that it becomes quite evident in front of everybody exactly how, rather than just happenstance that things happen like that. So I think that we have to work on. Is there anything else for future agenda items that we should be looking at? Well, with that, we come to the end of the, so we'll, does this work? The next one would be after the Economic Development Committee meeting in July? I'm not sure if the July 4th.
Oh, the holiday. It should be Monday, Tuesday, July 1st. Tuesday, July 1st is the next Economic Development Committee meeting?
And we'll have that at 6:30 again? Is that fine?
That works for you all?
Yeah, I'm the only person that's not on the Economic Development Committee, and that works, it, it, I'm perfectly okay with coming in at 6:30.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. So with that, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion to adjourn would be in order? There is a motion? Is there a second? There is a second? All in favor, send motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion is agreed to, and we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.